This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Welcome, everybody, and thank you for joining us this evening for the PTSA-sponsored Meet the Candidates Night. This evening, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Sangita Patel, and I am the current PTSA president. Tonight, we have five candidates that are running for two open Board of Education positions. I'd like to introduce Sherri Johnson, the president of the Monroe County Board of Education Association. She is our moderator for this evening. Sherri will introduce the candidates in the order that they will appear on the voting ballots and review the rules of the evening for the candidates and for the audience. Thank you, Sherri, for being with us this evening. We always appreciate your time. And thank you, candidates, for joining us this evening as well and allowing us this opportunity to get to know you. Sherri, I'll let you take over.
Good evening. I'd also like to welcome everyone to the Brighton Meet the Candidate Night. I do want to thank the Brighton PTSA for their work to set this up, and also the Brighton Central School District for supporting efforts in bringing this out to the community. As was stated, we do have five candidates for running for Board of Education seats in the Brighton Central School District, and I'm going to introduce them now, and then we will get started. So we have Mr. Robert Bonfilio, Mr. Chris Ross, Ms. Christina Lee, Ms. Esther Winter, and Mr. Avram Berman. To the community, thank you for your thoughtful questions. While we probably won't get to every single question, as I've done before, I have combined several questions, and I will present these out by topic, and hopefully we'll get to as many as possible. To our candidates, thank you for participating. Providing community residents the opportunity to listen to the viewpoints of those that are asking to serve as elected board trustees is key to participating in our democratic process as an informed voter. As was sent to you by the PTSA, you will be provided three minutes for an opening introductory statement and two minutes for a closing statement. Both of those will be done in order that you are placed on the ballot. The community questions, however, will be rotated in order so that every candidate gets the opportunity to answer a question first. You will have two minutes to answer each of those as well. I would ask that you please watch the timekeeper, Sangita, for a yellow card, which will indicate you have 20 seconds left. So that's the time to start wrapping up your last statement and for a red card to know when time is up. For the sake of time and in fairness to each of you and the viewing audience, we will be adhering strictly to this rule, and I'm also happy to repeat any question. So let's begin, and we will start with opening statements. And Mr. Robert Bonfilio, I'm sorry, I'm going to keep messing up. Bonfilio, opening statements, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. If we had a whiteboard, then I would do what I do with my students and spell it out phonetically. But yeah, Bonfilio is great. So thanks for putting this together. My motivation mainly for running for Brighton School Board is just to represent teachers. So I've taught mathematics for the past five years, and I moved back up to Brighton three years ago, and I taught at McQuade. And now I teach at Nativity Preparatory Academy. It's a small, low-income population school in the south wedge of Rochester, and it's a college prep model. But that's the bulk of my motivation, is that I think a lot of parents have a lot at stake and that those voices are important. And I'm a prospective parent of Brighton, but I do think that a lot of times teachers' voices go unheard or overlooked. And so my goal is to help keep the board and the superintendent and really the community accountable for how the decisions and the policies affect teachers' work. My background also includes education policy, and then I have done a lot of advocacy work for underrepresented groups, but specifically students and adults who are part of the LGBTQ community. So I have a lot of experience with DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion work, and I hope to bring that perspective. So I'm not going to take the full three minutes, but thanks for, again, organizing this and having me.
Thank you. So we'll move on to Mr. Christopher Ross, opening statement, three minutes.
Thank you. I am Christopher Ross, and I do want to thank Sangita and Sherri and the Brighton PTSA for organizing this event tonight. I'm running for school board because I want to help Brighton take its longstanding commitment to educational excellence to the next level. To be successful in this endeavor, however, we need to include the source of the absent voices and perspectives in the process. So a little about me. I'm a personnel thinker, listener, and collaborator who operates with the high sense of integrity and accountability. I'm a fierce advocate for justice, fairness, and equity. I believe that we can challenge each other's ideas, find ways to disagree with respect and compassion, keeping the development and success of the students central to our efforts. I grew up in suburban Los Angeles and also lived in Berkeley, Durham, and Austin. I have a bachelor's in history and a master's in history, bachelor's from Berkeley and master's from Duke University. When my wife and I decided we were going to stay in the area, we knew that Brighton would be the community where we wanted to raise our daughter. She's currently a second grader at Council Rock. We knew we wanted her to be challenged academically and welcomed socially. Thus far, she's thrived even with the uncertainty created by the pandemic. That's a function of the steady leadership of the administrators in the district and the intense construction of her teachers. We're thankful for that, but also know based on conversations with other parents of color about their often painful experiences with racism in the district, there will be obstacles and incidents that will make parts of her journey less pleasant. Since moving here, I've been active in the community. I'm a member of the town's Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Advisory Board, founding member of the Brighton Families of Color Group, a member of the Brighton Democratic Committee, and most recently participated as a panelist for Black History Month at FRES. In my professional life, I'm a registered nurse, educated at U of R School of Nursing. I have clinical experience in multiple critical care areas at Highland, Unity, and RGH. I currently work at Exelis. As the pandemic continues in full, it would be useful to have another board member, in addition to Dr. Gasparino with clinical experience, to help interpret health department guidelines and make policy decisions about how best to keep students and staff safe and healthy. My professional experience prior to becoming a nurse reflects my passion for challenging assumptions about and creating opportunities for underserved communities. I've worked as a substitute teacher and taught high school teacher and taught, I'm sorry, I taught high school history in the urban districts of San Francisco area. I worked as curriculum and recruitment director for a startup nonprofit pre-college leadership program for Filipino high school students in the Bay Area. And I was a research and program manager for the Rainbow Push Coalition Silicon Valley Project, connecting minority-owned businesses with technology companies, supplier networks. And also was a researcher and writer for SR International Center for Education Policy in Silicon Valley. We evaluated efficacy of state development initiatives. I observed classroom inspection, interviewed teachers and administrators, and co-authored multiple reports. I look forward to listening to what my fellow Brighton residents have to say about the best way to move our district forward, to support our children's individual and collective development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Christina, Ms. Christina Lee, three minutes.
Hi. Thank you, Sangita and Sherri, and the PTSA for hosting this tonight. I'm just going to put it out there and say I'm nervous. So now that it's said, I think I can move on. Again, my name is Christina Haeon Lee. Actually, I'm using my Korean middle name, which I didn't do three years ago because, you know, right now with the increase in Asian Pacific Islander violence against AAPI communities, I think it's important for me to use my middle name, and I'm very proud of it, actually. I have a contingent of Korean Rochesterians who call me by my middle name, Haeon. So if you ever hear me called that, you'll know that those people have known me for a very, very long time. I am running for my second term on the Board of Education. I have had three years of really enjoyed my time on the board. I initially ran for the board because I am a Brighton grad. I grew up here. I went to school here. I felt that my education was solid. I left with a really good educational foundation, and it's really the reason I came back to the district too. I have three children, one who graduated last year and two in the district right now. And I wanted, you know, a competitive, strong, holistic education for them. And when we moved back here, I really wanted to serve the community in this capacity. I have been happy to do so these last three years. It's been a great experience for me. I've learned a lot. I feel so strongly that I'm running again since I have enjoyed my time. In my professional life, and part of the reason that I wanted to join the board is that I'm also in education. I teach as an adjunct anthropology, and I have taught sociology. Currently, I'm the Global Education Coordinator at MCC, so my work revolves around global education, curricular development. I do a lot of work at the college in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion around teaching and learning. We just started a new work group there. And as a board member, I have had the privilege to serve on several hiring committees. I've also served on different academic review committees here in Brighton. And most currently, I am serving as the Area Two Representative for the New York State School Board Association's New Committee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And this new committee with the New York State School Board Association is hoping to be able to provide guidance to all school boards in New York State in terms of DEI efforts and the holistic inclusion of professional development and programming around DEI. Thank you, Sangita.
Thank you. And next, we have Ms. Esther Winter.
Hello, everyone. I'm Esther Winter. I'd like to thank Sherri and Sangita for moderating and the PTSA for allowing me to introduce myself this evening. A little bit about myself. I grew up in Los Angeles, received a BFA in musical theater from Syracuse University. I moved to New York City and was a working actor for 11 years. My husband, John, and I have been married for 27 years, and we have four children. Two have graduated through the district, John and Madeline, and my son Harrison is a current senior at Brighton High School, and my daughter Julia is an eighth grader at Twelve Quarters. We moved to Brighton in 2003, and in that same year, I started my own business called Canal Side Music Together, which is an early childhood music education program for young children and their parents. I'm also an early music education teacher. I've been involved in many aspects of the school district over the years, such as the Council Rock Principal Selection Committee, a panelist for College and Career Night, and volunteer for visual and performing arts events and teacher appreciation lunches. Outside of BCSD, I am a teacher trainer for Music Together Worldwide. I'm an actor, director, and choreographer at various local theaters, including JCC and Black Friars Theater. I'm also an artist educator, creative producer, and artistic council member at Jiva Theater Center. I truly, I was truly fortunate to grow up in a thriving upper-middle black neighborhood in California, filled with endless possibility. My friends and teachers were a melting pot of all cultures, and I was exposed to the arts at a young age, starting my path towards becoming a professional actor for many years. One of the reasons my family and I moved to Rochester was because of its thriving arts community. I was excited to share my love of the arts with my children and pleased that three of my four kids are pursuing a creative career, with the fourth heading in that direction as well. Maintaining a strong arts program in our district is as important as sports, STEM, or any other programming for our children. The arts connect our community. They connect our students to the community, and they foster empathy. You can have great STEM, but if you do not have empathy for each other, you cannot move your community forward. These two disciplines are stronger when they work in tandem. I'm also running for the Board of Education because I feel my life experience as a black woman and a black music educator would be a valuable contribution to the voices that make decisions about our district and the future of our children. It is essential that our board reflect the families in this district. Representation is important, not only for the BIPOC students of our district, but also for the white students as well. Unconscious bias begins where representation ends. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And next, Avram, Mr. Avram Berman, if you could please give us your three-minute opening statement.
Good evening. I'm running for a seat on the Brighton Board of Education because the board has lost impartiality and because I believe the policies of the district should be shaped by our entire community. The school district, as it stands today, operates without any meaningful check and balances as it insulates itself from the public's input and engagement, acting more like a private school. If elected, I will greatly build upon and improve the strengths of the Brighton School District. I will include transparency, ensure fair representation, and implement stringent checks and balances. I will also set a yearly goal not to exceed $2 million in budget increases. If elected, I'll promote unprecedented input and access to our board and the school district. The community's voice will be heard with input from every parent, every student, every teacher, staff and faculty members, and from the 60% of our district voters without any children in attendance. As many of you know, I'm a staunch critic of the mixed messaging that envelops our yearly budget process because it lacks transparency, it's riddled with propaganda, it's misleading, and overly complicated. Unfortunately, it's intentional. I know this because I've spent about 100 hours researching and compiling district financial data from the past 20 years and analyzing the budgets. I address these concerns regarding our past budgets as well as the runaway 2122 budget in our extended statement at BrightonSpeaks.com, which will be available at 9:30 PM. Did you know that every year the district has a surplus budget that is used to pay down our tax levy for the following school year? A tax levy is simply that portion of the school budget, which is paid by our community, and is also used to fund various reserve accounts for things like computers and renovations. And as of June last year, it had $22.8 million, equal to about 25% of our $83 million school district budget. Well, I'm not saying we shouldn't have reserves. Keep in mind that for every million in reserves is a million that wasn't used to reduce the tax levy, resulting in higher taxes paid by our community. Recently, I learned that a reserve fund was created in 2020 with $1.3 million to settle and address sexual assault lawsuits against the Brighton Central School District in two separate cases known as the insurance CVA. You weren't told about it because Board of Education, led by Marka Kanovich and Superintendent Kevin McGowan, didn't want you to know. When it comes to our reputation, truth is expendable, which is how we arrived here in the first place. Just recently, student Matt Burns started a change that our petition, which he stated, which has received over 6,000 signatures, which stated, and I quote, "For far too long, Brighton has refused to take action against abusers and rapists and has covered up instances of sexual assault and rape. They refuse to protect the well-being of our victims and their classmates. We would like to see the district held accountable for their negligence." Clearly, we have a transparency issue, which is far-reaching with implications that affect not only our budget, but more importantly, the safety and well-being of our kids. He who controls the narrative, controls perception, controls the vote, and retains power, that's not democracy, and it's not Brighton. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get to the questions, and I will go back to the top of the ballot in order to do that. You are free to speak about your platform, ideas, and viewpoints, how they differ from the current board of the district. I'm asking you not to call out or criticize a specific individual. Thank you. So back to the top, and I have permission from the candidates to call them by their first name. Therefore, I won't mess up their last name. So, Robert, you get the first question from the community. Again, two minutes, and please keep watching for the time. And this question's regarding the Brighton blueprint. And the question, and I can repeat a question for anybody who would like. Are there any initiatives on the Brighton blueprint that you feel should be amended, clarified, or removed? And if not, what would you then instead highlight? So amended, clarified, or removed from the Brighton blueprint. If not, what would you highlight? Robert, first.
Thank you. So when I was looking at the Brighton blueprint, it seemed like, especially in the last year, that I'm going to use DEI for diversity, equity, inclusion, that that was really the focus for where the district wanted to put their energy towards, and I think that's great. I also think that's a really hard thing to focus on because it steps into every sector of education. It's childcare, it's transportation, it's everything that you have to consider. So for that to be the priority or the focus, I think, is too broad. One thing that I think that wasn't emphasized as much as I would think it would be within the DEI spectrum was mental health concerns, especially during the pandemic and especially as students are hopefully being transitioned back into more social interactions as the schools resume five days, or at least elementary schools. I really think that the mental health of our students and our families and our teachers is going to need more attention. So whether that means more resources devoted to it or more space to have those conversations, I think that's going to be necessary to get us through this pandemic as it lingers on. Yeah, that's where I put my focus, is on mental health.
Thank you. Chris, same question, two minutes.
Thank you. I would agree with Robert on the mental health aspect. As the students are returning to school, I think we definitely need more investment in those resources. I would actually recommend using funds from the American Recovery Act that we received from the federal government to put resources toward that. Also, I would look towards expanding the district's DEI efforts as well beyond the classroom, looking at opportunities to help grow minority women-owned businesses in Brighton and the greater Monroe County. So, for example, we do book fairs at each of the schools. Perhaps we could partner with independent booksellers in Monroe County to help grow their businesses as opposed to partnering with Follett, a large, you know, national corporation, to help grow our community. Also, we're doing a lot of construction in the district. Be interested to see to what extent any of the contractors are using subcontractors for minority or women-owned businesses as well. If we're going to really embrace DEI throughout the district, I think we need to look at it at every level, not just in the classroom, but where we're spending our money and to the extent that we can leverage our spending power to expand minority and women-owned businesses in the community. We would do a great service for our community towards that end. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina, same question, please.
So, yeah, I think I've seen a lot of, you know, the blueprint is a great tool that we've implemented in the district in terms of keeping us accountable and keeping us on track in terms of what our goals and visions are for the district. And what I have liked about it is that, I think, and I think it's imperative in all institutions at this point, to infuse the DEI work in every aspect of what we're doing. And, you know, I think that we have been, you know, this is a learning curve for everybody. So I think we have taken time to examine our DEI efforts in terms of hiring practices and family engagement and curricular development and, you know, responsive curriculum materials that we're using in the district. I also think in terms of mental health concerns that that is another conversation around DEI and mental health. This year in particular around COVID, I think, has shown really desperate outcomes for different communities in terms of education, mental health. And, you know, those are things that we talk about as a board. I know that they're talking about, you know, Dr. McGowan in the district. Sorry, we're not supposed to say specific people, but we are talking about it as a district, and we continue to talk about it. And I think it's important for us as a board to continually, like, this is an evolution, an evolving document, right? These are not static. And so, you know, we do this blueprint process every year, and we hopefully make it better every year. And I think if there are things that we need to improve on, you know, I love the input of the community. We have community members, our staff, our administrators, all part of that process, and I hope that we can continue that. So that's my answer for now.
Thank you. Esther, same question, two minutes.
Thank you. I agree with Robert, Chris, and Christina, everything they've said regarding this topic. I would like to see the staff continue to grow as far as reflecting the cultural diversity of the community. I know that that is something that takes time to implement, but seeing that that is one of the points on the blueprint, in the blueprint, rather, is very encouraging. I would encourage the continuation of the curriculum and instruction to foster an appreciation for the diversity of people and their beliefs and to instruct all of our children at appropriate skill levels to continue to do that and to continue the commitment to diversify our staff so that it reflects our district is something that I look, I hope that will continue to stay in the forefront on the blueprint. Thank you.
Thank you. And Avram, same question, two minutes.
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Sure. Are there any initiatives on the Brighton blueprint that you feel should be amended, clarified, or removed? And if not, what would you highlight them?
Well, you know, I would have to agree that, you know, dealing with mental health issues is certainly a paramount issue. And I think also discussing about what are the underlying reasons why children are having, you know, these difficulties and certainly addressing issues of diversity and making sure that we have, you know, a platform in place, you know, that talks with students, you know, about the hardships, you know, and having those difficult conversations. You know, to really give you a fair answer, I really feel compelled that I would have to, you know, having an all-engaging conversation with the community to get their input and to make sure that, and to get a consensus and find out. Because really, the blueprint is the district's blueprint. But in the grand scheme of things, it's really what the community wants, and the blueprint within the school district should reflect that. And so if I'm elected to the Board of Education, you know, part of what I will do is I will make sure that, you know, sort of the will of the community is reflected in that blueprint. And that's really the best answer I could provide you at this time.
Thank you. So on to question two, and this time, Chris, you get the question first. There were several questions on learning loss. So the question I picked is, what is your plan for helping students recover academically from the disruption of the pandemic and where possible differentiate by grade level? So they have down K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. But the general question is, how do you want to help students recover from that?
Yeah. So I think, again, this would go back to the American Recovery Funds from the federal government that were released. I, my plan, or my idea, would be to partner with organizations, companies, individuals who already do academic support services with our students in Brighton. That way, the district doesn't have to ramp up hiring people, and when the funds are exhausted, we're not having to lay people off. These companies should be able to scale up fairly quickly for this work as well. Most importantly, we need to identify which students need assistance as quickly as possible, get them up to speed as quickly as possible, and focus on the core areas, the larger group areas that are going to be needed to allow the students to keep pace with their peers at the same grade level. So assessing as quickly as possible, partnering with existing organizations. And Brighton's very fortunate. We have a significant infrastructure of those in our community. And then making sure that the right people are getting there at the right time. I think it's going to vary by gate, grade level or school level, obviously. The upper-level kids may be at more of a disadvantage having a longer period away from full-time school than the younger children. Again, the younger children are going to, there's more core skills and knowledge that need to be developed at those young ages in order for them to advance. So it's really difficult, but we want to make sure that we're giving the resources to any of the kids, whichever school level, whatever grade level, whatever subject that they need as fast as possible. And I think the best way to do that would be to partner with our existing community organizations. Thanks.
Thank you. Christina, you get this one next.
So thinking about each school, I think what I would like to do is make sure that each school is supported in terms of the supports that they need for additional help for each grade level or each school. This, you know, this is an interesting conversation because on a global level, you know, this is an issue for, you know, not only us, but for probably every school district, every country in this world. And, you know, I hope, and I have seen particularly this year in my experience, both as a mom and as a board member, that our teachers are already actually providing the supports that many of our kids need. One of the things that we've learned this 12 months is that kids are learning this material differently, right? Some kids are really succeeding in this hybrid or virtual model. Some kids are really suffering or are not able to keep up. Some kids are really suffering or are not able to keep up. And our teachers are already doing the work. They're already supporting the students that need the extra support. As a team in each school, I know that they're making sure that the students that are not able to, that are having trouble are, you know, getting the attention that they need. So there are things in place already. So I don't see it really as an entire year lost. I think there will certainly be things that we need to build in, but I think we've, we're already doing the work is what I've seen.
Thank you. And Esther, same question?
I believe that it really has to do with the individual of the student and the individual needs of that particular student. Having two children here at home doing, in hybrid for this year, I can see that they are both, fortunately, they are thriving in this hybrid model, but I also know that they have friends who are not. So if, once, you know, once every school is assessed and once all the needs are addressed as far as what child needs, what particular service to help them come up to speed, if you will, I believe that it's something that should be addressed individually per school and then per child. And hopefully with funding, we'd be able to provide that particular child with whatever they need in order to succeed.
Thank you. And Avram, same question?
You know, I have to see assessment data as to where, you know, various kids are within the school district. I haven't been privy to that. But obviously, you know, I think it goes without saying that everybody need, you know, we have to make sure the teachers have the proper resources to make sure that they can facilitate, you know, what other needs, you know, that are required. I mean, obviously, we're, we want to be equitable, right? So we want to make sure that, just in general, that teachers always have the resources to make sure that different students from different backgrounds or, you know, and we can even look at, you know, the pandemic, obviously, as being a causality to, the idea of being equitable to make sure those resources are in place. One of the things I think about is I think about, you know, the single parent who is, you know, has a job. And before this whole thing went down, you know, the kids were, you know, at school and now they're at home and then they're, you know, they're operating fully in a remote training. What do you do in that situation? So I think that, you know, one of the things that I would like to do if I get elected would be to sit down again and talk with, you know, all of the parents and find out exactly, you know, get an assessment even from them as to where they think their kids are at. And obviously, you know, get, have some sort of evaluation that's presented by the school district so we can sort of have a metric so we can figure out how to move forward and try to offset the amount of time, you know, that we've lost. But the bottom line is we've lost a lot of time. Sometimes you just can't get it back and you just got to move forward and continue and march on.
Thank you. And Robert, same question?
So I would want to echo what Christina was saying about maybe reframing it so it's not thinking about a year that's been lost. And I don't want to minimize the fear that people are feeling about, oh, what are we going to do next year or two years or three years from now since we've had this year that's kind of imploded around us? I do think that the way to tackle learning loss fears are to have done what Brighton has done to some extent, which is think about what to do now and not wait until the summer and say, oh, how do we correct everything? So which Brighton did to some extent with thinking about technological resources, thinking about how students need bookstabs at home, trying to tackle those inequities. I think that when kids return to school, whenever that can be full-time, that they will rally and will kind of get back into school mode and they will figure it out. I also think there will be students that won't do that. And that is where I think the emphasis on mental health needs to be really attuned into those concerns so that those supports can be ready to deal with students that are going to come back into a full-time academic stress mode and they're going to break down. And there needs to be supports ready for those students. I also think that teachers need to be prepped accordingly so that their expectations don't change, so that you still have the high standard Brighton education, but so that they're going to have more room for patience and more room for being able to work with students that are going to need the extra time to make up for whatever time has been lost for each individual student. My last comment is also Christina mentioned how this is a global issue. It is a global issue and it's a Rochester issue. And I think it would be really great to see Brighton come together with other districts and figure out how to deal with this and not think of it as a Brighton issue. I think that's really important to work with our neighbors.
Thank you. Thank you. So Christina, the next question is yours. And first, yours first, everyone answers, but yours first. This question is one of several on start times for students. How do you envision the path toward making a start time change for our older kids' health? Christina?
Yep. Good question. Yeah, I know that, you know, several, probably several of us on the board who have high schoolers, thinking about going back to school five days a week. I think all of our kids sort of panicked, what? I don't get to sleep in on those days that I'm not in school? I mean, you know, personally, I do feel that teenagers do need a lot of sleep. And every teenager is different, right? I mean, I have three children who work on different timelines. Their sleep schedule is different, their eating schedule is different, and the way that they tackle homework and work is different. So there's not a one-size-fits-all. I think this year, if anything, it's taught us that we have some flexibility in terms of how we learn. You know, but I'm also aware that there are budget constraints and constraints in terms of how we organize our academic day for everyone, including for our teachers who also have families, which has also been, I think, you know, as a teacher working at home and also trying to manage our own children's schedules, that is, that can be a challenge as well. So I think that it's something that we should continue to talk about. We should think about, have some flexibility around it. Myself personally, you know, I, if my family had a choice, then they would all be in schools at different times of the day. But it is an important discussion and I do see the benefit of having, for our teenagers to get enough rest so that they can tackle the, you know, the academic rigors of our district.
Thank you. Esther, this is yours for the second.
Thank you. It's a very interesting topic. I, now that I've had all of my children, my youngest is 14, so they're all teenage or older. And I have seen the difference as far as when they're able to rise when later in the day or later in the morning to get their day started. Their productivity seems to be more productive as opposed to having to get up very early to get to school. I understand that it is not a one-size-fits-all, as Christina said. And, but it is definitely something that should be continued to be discussed. And it would be interesting to see if it was, if it's possible to experiment to see what would happen if we had later start times. If that is possible to explore that, I think it should be explored.
Thank you. Avram, same question?
Well, as I currently have no children in the school district, I have a three-year-old and a two-year-old without a lot of extra free time, you know, if they were in the school district, I guess my response would be that, you know, first, I'd have to listen to a consensus of the parents to get their input as to what they felt, you know, what their thoughts were about a start time, you know. But for the last year, despite, you know, the stresses and the rigors of the pandemic, it's, we're getting ready to get back to work and it's time to get back to work. You know, the kids have been home for the most part and now it's, we're ready to go back to school. So that's my final answer.
Thank you. That most is up to Robert. Same question, two minutes?
Can you repeat it, please?
Sorry, I muted. Absolutely. How do you envision a path toward making a start time change for our older kids' health?
Thanks. So I love this question. I think that rethinking something that we have just kind of done every year, just start at the same time without, like, this is something that we've done forever. So to break that tradition, I think that's a great, great question and great conversation to start. I think that, I believe it was Webster, right, initiated a later start time? Either it was either this past year or it would have been two years ago. So I think talking to them is really integral to figuring this out. And I also think that figuring out how transportation would play into this is a key point for focus. And I know Brighton has a lot of walkers, but that always seems to be the hurdle with later start times because parents have to get to work and the students are starting at different times and the transportation is going to be where the effort has to be placed.
Thank you. And Chris?
So I would agree with what everyone said thus far. I mean, the early start time is something I only learned about in the past few years from networking with some other parents in the district. My daughter's probably not old enough, but I do remember when I taught high school and those first two periods were like a waste. No one was awake, including me. So I do agree that, you know, there is some benefit and based on the research, there's shown to be a benefit to a later start time. Again, as Robert mentioned, the logistical hurdles of coordinating parents' work time, the buses, that would have to be studied. But I think we learned a lot in this year about policy ideas that have been kind of bandied about in research and policy circles that we had to try out overnight, whether that was, you know, a later start time, a four-day school week, you know, some part remote, some part in-person teaching, you know, we had to try overnight. And I think there were some successes that we need to kind of tease out by talking to the parents and the students about perhaps what we can integrate into our existing traditional structure to help reach more students. I'm sure some of the students who learn things more quickly enjoyed having that Wednesday day to explore some things in more depth. Maybe we can look at a four-day work week for, traditionally instructional week for those students and give them a fifth day of more of an independent learning with a teacher mentor. Or, you know, for the students who are a little more shy about asking questions, they could type in the Zoom chat and not have to risk the social embarrassment of raising their hand and asking a question. So I think there are a lot of things we've learned in this year that we could investigate further to see how they would affect us as we return to the regular school year. Thanks.
Thank you. Esther, you get this question first, but I want to give you all a little setup for it. There were several questions around advocating for excellence in education around specific areas like gifted and talented, special education, STEM, and the arts. But there were also several questions related to keeping academics strong in Brighton. So the question that I am going to ask you is what will you do as a board member to make sure that academic standards are high for all students? And then feel free if you want to use one of those specific areas to example.
Thank you. As I'm sure all the parents in our district believe and want to continue to have is excellence in our academics. I am a strong advocate for keeping our academics as a high priority in addition to maintaining and keeping the arts first and foremost as well. Music learning supports all learning and one absolutely serves the other. So as far as what programs should be at the forefront, it's, you know, our AP classes and our STEM classes and all of that is definitely something that should continue to be maintained. But in addition to that, I believe a well-rounded student is essential for a well-rounded human. That focuses on, that bleeds into mental health and everything that goes with that as well. So I believe that our academics should stay at the forefront and be prominent and we should continue to strive to be, to maintain our excellence.
Thank you. Avram, you get this question second?
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Sure can. What will you do as a board member to make sure that academic standards are high for all students?
Well, I think the most important thing is to understand that, you know, equality does not equal equity. And in order to make sure that students that come from all different various backgrounds are on an even playing field, we have to make sure the teachers obviously have the adequate resources, you know, again, to level the playing field. And as I've said with all of my other responses, having not been a board member and again, currently having a three and a two-year-old, is that, you know, my purpose on being on the Board of Education is to reflect the will of the community. So I hope that I'll have an opportunity to talk with every parent and every teacher in order to formulate, you know, better responses, you know, to these questions so that they're reflected in the policies that the Board of Education, you know, ultimately implements on behalf of the community and the constituents, you know, which voted to put them into this important decision-making role. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert, you get this question next?
Thank you. I think that there's a lot to think about with this question. I believe that there's a lot of stress around academics and you pointed out STEM, right? And I'm a math teacher, but I always try to incorporate interdisciplinary focuses within my classroom to try to bring the stress out of it because people come in, students come into math and they're already high-strung and we haven't even started our first definition or our first equation. So I really appreciate Esther's focus on the arts. And I think it's really important to figure out ways to blend disciplines together, math, science, arts, so that it doesn't seem like these subjects are siloed off and that they're just stress inducers for everyone that needs to go into them. I also think that there's been a discussion about trying to figure out how to make APs more accessible for all students. And I think that's really important to think about how we want to ensure educational excellence for the whole community. And I also believe, especially now that COVID has shaken things up, that standardized testing is going to have to be a focus that the board deals with at some point. So the opt-out movement of teachers and parents encouraging students to make their own decision for what's right for them, whether or not to take these standardized tests, I think that is going to come to Brighton and it could really open up opportunity if teachers want more time to put toward their instruction and if students want more time not to freak out about these standardized tests. I think, I think there's a lot to do with this question, a big curriculum evaluation. I love it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chris, same question?
So it's really sort of an equity question, I think, somewhere hidden in there. The issue is, I think, traditionally in Brighton historically, not all groups have been encouraged by teachers, administrators to pursue rigorous academic courses for a variety of reasons. So I think that's part of, I think we need to encourage as many kids as possible to challenge themselves in the classroom and to give them the supports and the resources to do that. You know, some kids may be stronger in math, you know, some may be stronger in English, but does that mean they should not, you know, take a risk, a responsible risk to challenge themselves one year and say, hey, I may not get an A in this class. I may get a B or a C, but I took the risk and that's part of learning and that's part of life. So I would encourage that. I think also what I think also what Robert said about kids being, you know, mentally prepared to take these classes is important. I know the district is rolling out the social emotional learning curriculum and I think that's very important. Kids need to be able to set positive goals and know why they're setting those goals for themselves. Is it because mom and dad want me to go to Harvard? Or is it because I actually enjoy doing math and that's what I want to do? So we need to encourage some agency within the kids, within the students to make these decisions for themselves and give them the resources and supports to say, hey, give it a shot. If you make a mistake, I'm here to support you. We can, we can figure this out together. But I think that's how we keep our academic excellence there, encouraging more kids to take more risks and being there to support them as they do so.
Thank you. And Christina, you get this one.
Okay. I really like what everybody shared on this question. I, I think it is important for our kids to know that they can take risks and be supported. That's a really, that's, I'm just thinking about my own kids. But I also am thinking that, you know, how are we really defining academic standards? I'm assuming that the question is really coming from a place of in terms of numerical, I'm trying to think of what they mean by academic standards in this question because, you know, are, are the standards to be taking all, you know, I think we offer a variety of classes and courses at the district for all students to excel in something, right? So whatever their strength is, whatever their interest might be, that they have an opportunity to excel, whether it's in the arts, whether it's in STEM, you know, whether it's in in writing. I think it's important to understand what we mean by academic standards. And I always feel like are we successful if we have scored the highest as a district for our students? Or are we successful if we turn out students who are really strong, critical thinkers, who can make decisions in terms of taking risks, in terms of challenging themselves, in terms of having, having opportunities? And in Brighton, we're lucky that we have a strong arts and music program and a strong, you know, the traditional academic programs as well. And I just want all of our kids to find where they can excel and work up to their, above their potential, you know, so that they feel successful and that they move on to the next place and also find that success.
Thank you. All right. The next question, Avram, you get this question first. Do you support expanding civics education in our district?
Of course I, of course I support expanding civics in, in our district. That's my answer.
Thank you. Robert, same question.
Yeah, that's a on-point question. You can on-point answer of yes, but I, I think the way to do it, you have to be pretty intentional and real smart, right? So picking up where we just left off with that last question, civics should be in every course that every student takes. It should be a discussion that you have in writing, in arts, in math. It shouldn't be like this thing that has been forgotten, oh, we don't talk about civics anymore. And I think teachers do a good job to some extent right now of incorporating those types of discussions. I think that the ideas around cultural responsive learning, that is civics engagement. I think that Brighton also has a unique opportunity right now, given the climate of the city of Rochester, to figure out what can we do as a community and what can we do within our school building, within our courses, if you think about service learning, to help out the Rochester community that is dealing with a lot of hate and a lot of violence and a lot of discrimination and just a lot of loss of faith. But yes, absolutely civics.
Thank you. Chris, same question.
Definitely. I think the last four years have been an excellent case study in what happens when we don't, you know, know civics enough, whether it's the police brutality in Minneapolis and across the country, really sadly, or, you know, what happened with the, the most recent presidential election. I think these kids are almost fortunate to, the kids who are going to be in high school and when typically civics, I guess, is at least when I was in high school, was taught, 11th, 12th grade, that they're going to have excellent materials to study and there's going to be excellent debate around how things unfolded. Kids need to be able to look at information critically, you know, not know that just because it's on someone's blog or it's on X and Y news site that you can accept it as just empirical fact. That people write for different reasons, for different political persuasions. You need to be able to tease that out and be able to understand what's opinion and what's actual journalism. And I think we need to get back to a sense where we can all agree upon a common set of facts. And I, the last four years, I feel like that's gone out the window. It's always been a bit tenuous, but I think it really got chucked in the last four years. And to be able to help students build a common set of facts again amongst themselves and then for the larger community would be a great boon for our community and for our nation as a whole as we try to heal together. Thanks.
Thank you. Christina, same question, please.
Yes, I would definitely support teaching civics in our district. I think, you know, that's actually one of the things I feel that I received coming out of this district many, many years ago. And I also feel that my kids are able to have engagement and discussions with their teachers and classmates about the role that they have in this society that we live in and what kind of agency they have as young people, as students who don't yet vote even, what kind of voice they have. You know, this is, you know, we are a school community and we're also a Brighton town community and so much, I think, of civics is to remember that we, we are, you know, we need to work together. We need to be able to be engaged with the people that we live with and that we go to school with and, and continue that engagement as they leave us and be strong advocates of what they want to fight for as they leave for, leave Brighton. So yes, I would support it. And I, I really do think it should be part of all aspects of our education.
Thank you. And Esther?
Absolutely. Yes, I believe civics is essential in every, in every aspect of our education as everyone stated before me. Not just talking about the, the past four years, but even the eight years before that and the evolution that has happened in our country with having a president that, you know, a black president that made people of color see themselves differently and, and, and in turn have other people see people of color differently because of that president. And then the aftermath of that with the past four years, I think it's very important to, to have independent thinkers and people who are able to, to separate you know, fake news from what really is happening and to be able to make up their own minds and to be critical thinkers. And the only way to do that is to learn that around in school and to have the opportunity to see others in, in different ways than perhaps they may not have seen them initially. And that's what happens when you learn, when you are studying civics. So absolutely, yes.
Thank you. That moves us back to the top of the order. And the question I'm going to be asking you now was the most submitted question by the community, each having a little bit of a different tenor or tone to it. So I've combined these into an overall question for you to respond to. And this is the question, and Robert, you're first. As a Board of Education member, how will you ensure that our schools are places where diversity of thought is valued and that teachers, staff and students can listen and respect differing opinions in a nurturing environment?
Thank you. I, I really think that if Brighton wants to uphold these standards of empathy and trust and inclusion, that it needs to be part of the evaluation process of the courses, of the teachers, of students' own learning. I know that in, as far as hiring practices, when, when people are calling for, advocating for figuring out how to hire and recruit and retain a more diverse staff to contribute to that larger pool of thought and perspective to enrich learning. I, I know that during that process that there's encouragement or I believe it's a mandate that applicants have a diversity statement or some written understanding of how they conceive of what that means, equity and inclusion. But if, if there's a problem in the school, I don't think Brighton should be reactive to it. I think that there should be very proactive steps in figuring out how to ensure that the classrooms are spaces where thought can be freely given and also respected and criticized and argued over and figured out. So what I conceive that of looking like is as teachers are being evaluated for their overall performance, there should be a valuation of how well that they are executing these practices of equity and inclusion. It should be something that they are scored on or however the evaluation system works in Brighton. I also think that if the lower school kids are, they just got this, the new, the socio-emotional learning has been incorporated into the curriculum, that is something that they can be assessed on. And it doesn't have to be a grade, but it should be something that we are looking at proactively. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris, this is for you for a second.
So yeah, I'm all for a diversity of thought in the classroom. I think a healthy debate, rigorous debate based in, based on facts and opinion are, are healthy for any, in any school classroom, should be, you know, less of a teacher preaching or teaching at the students and more the teacher facilitating a discussion amongst the students about, about ideas. And but the important thing is we need to be able, we have to ensure that the students have the critical thinking skills and the discussion skills to be able, to be able to have those discussions. So if that means investing more in professional development for the teachers to ensure that they feel comfortable having those discussions, then so be it. I'm all for it. And I think most teachers would encourage getting more professional development to make them more effective teachers in the classroom and so forth. I, I do, sometimes when people bring up the diversity of thought ideas, I think people are thinking it's, we don't want to hear ideas that are liberal or conservative or vice versa. The, the issue is, I would have with that is that when we're thinking of diversity of thought, I don't want the thoughts that are expressed to dehumanize any people in the classroom, to make it an uncomfortable space to be having discussions. So if the teachers don't feel comfortable doing that, I think they need to be careful about the content that they're presenting because in a district that is still predominantly white, it can become a threatening environment for students of color in those spaces. So I would be, just ask people to be mindful of the repercussions of these discussions if you cannot facilitate them in a, in a healthy and safe way for all students. Thanks.
Thank you. Christina, you have this one next.
Yeah, I was also just thinking about how this question might be, you know, what, what the question, what's behind the question, I guess. I think it is important for all of us to, you know, our children, our adults, to be able to have difficult and important and courageous conversations with one another. I think one of the things that we have seen in our society is that it becomes personalized in a way that can be dehumanizing, that can attack people at their core. And I think, you know, as we teach our kids to be critical thinkers, that we also have to teach them to pull the lens back in terms of how, how these issues are framed and and that, you know, that's a difficult thing to do as an adult. It is also difficult to do as, as a kid. And so, you know, it's important for us as a board, as administrators, you know, for all of us to be well-equipped in, in the kind of guidance we need to be able to facilitate this and, and to do it in a respectful and I like that empathetic and fact-based. So that, that's what I was thinking.
Thank you. Esther?
Thank you. I think it's really important for any, in, in terms of any discussion that is difficult to have, whether it's between a student and the teacher or teachers with other teachers is to create a safe space, a space that is able to allow these difficult discussions to happen, to understand that, you know, these risks are uncomfortable but are definitely necessary in order to move forward in any way. Asking questions of their peers about issues about diversity, all of these topics are very hard to discuss, but we need to acknowledge that everyone is in a different place and to honor one another's thoughts and ideas. And that is the only way for any, any progress to be made is out of respect and creating a safe space for everyone involved.
Can't hear you, Sheri.
I'm sorry. It's your turn, Avram.
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Yes, absolutely. As a Board of Education member, how will you ensure that our schools are, are places where diversity of thought is valued and that teachers, staff and students can listen and respect differing opinions in a nurturing environment?
Well, I think the first thing is that we have to make sure that our teaching staff is diversified. In fact, out of the roughly 3,500 students within the Brighton Central School District, 70% are white. I think it's also important that we have a diversified Board of Education. And not only culturally, but also in terms of their skill sets. You know, I think the other, I think the other component too is to make sure that if we're going to promote diversity and inclusion within the school district, then the administration has to also make sure that diversity and inclusion is, is practiced with the community that funds it. You know, just to get on a little bit of a tangent here, you know, because the question really doesn't seem to have been asked tonight, which was sort of surprising, but I want to touch upon just diversity in general with things, you know, that are going on prevalent now. And that is just to sort of talk about that. I think that, you know, as some other members had mentioned, we have to learn how to have difficult conversations, you know, with the students. I think we have to also work with the students on engaging sort of in cultural humility to understand the paths that other people have taken. I think that it would also be not a bad idea to take people who are in the majority and put them in a place where they're in the minority to help them gain perspective about things that are going on, role-playing, you know. And obviously we have issues of equity, making sure again that teachers have the resources to properly work with different individuals with different backgrounds. And, you know, I think this is interesting. I was reading a little stat that said, you know, if you, if you boil the whole world population down to about 100 people. And I think the stat was, you know, 82 out of those 100 people would be people of color, 72 of the remaining would be, out of the 82 would be Asian. And, and just nine would speak English. So I think that it's, it's, you know, you know, I'm out of time, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I am going to allow all of you to begin your closing statements. And we again, we'll go back to the top of the order with Robert, two minutes, closing statement.
So thank you again. This, I really value this opportunity to have this kind of discussion, even if it's not directed at each other, at least with the rest of the community and even if we can't see you. So thanks for signing on and watching us mess up over Zoom. I, I think we talked about a lot of important things tonight and my goal is to be an active listener and team player and all those good things, but really figure in, figure out and tap into what the priorities of the community are. We can focus on so much, right? There's a lot of need and there's a lot of different areas that and there's a lot of different areas that we could be paying attention to. But in order to actually figure out what i, we can do, we need to effectively set our priorities. So my main thought coming out of this conversation is we talked so much about real great things and we have to be ready to take those action steps and go into the schools and go into our community and be ready and visible. Um, and I, I recognize that I'm, I'm young looking, um, but I listened to Joan Armitreding, so I have a very older perspective, I think. Um, but I, I'm really excited for the, the vision that you all have laid out for Brighton. Um, and I, I hope to continue to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris? Your closing statement, please.
So uh, thanks again to uh, Sangita and Sheri and the Brighton PTSA for putting this together and thanks for um, all those people out there who are tortured by listening to us blather on tonight about our ideas. I appreciate that. Um, and I also appreciate um, this time that I've had with the, our fellow uh, candidates for the board positions. Uh, it's been a pleasure meeting you all and hearing your ideas and hearing the synergies um, for some of our perspectives. Um, you know, I approach the board position with humility and the knowledge of the community and trust us with the sacred, sacred obligation to care for and educate their children. Uh, no one person or group can have answers for all the questions. Um, together, I, and especially with new perspectives, I think we can begin tackling some of the more complex and persistent ones that have um, troubled Brighton for some time. Um, our schools should provide all our children with an inclusive rigorous education that prepares them to navigate increasingly complex and diverse worlds with empathy, curiosity and resilience. Um, I believe that my background in advocacy, education, policy analysis and healthcare has uniquely prepared me for this particular moment in our district's history. I hope that I can earn your vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christina?
Um, thank you again to the PTSA for hosting this and for Sheri and Sangita for being here to moderate tonight. Um, I, and also thank you for everybody watching um, on this Zoom format. It's been a very unusual year and I know that we are getting used to this model, but I hope to see all of you in person sometime soon. Um, I, I'm really, you know, I'm running for a second term because I feel like I have learned quite a bit in three years. I feel that, you know, I am, my interest is to advocate for our families, for our kids, um, for our staff administrators, our superintendent, to make sure that everyone has the tools to be successful in this district, whatever your strength is. Um, I, I hope that I can um, be there to be able to um, provide the support, um, the advocacy for you. And um, you know, I, I feel like um, in my three years, um, I've found my voice on the board. Um, I feel that the board and I have had a, a, a great three years together. Um, we do a good job of listening to each other, of sharing our ideas and differences and similarities. Um, we do it respectfully and I hope to continue that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Esther.
Thank you, uh, Sheri, Sangita and the PTSA for providing this opportunity this evening to speak to whoever's listening. Uh, I wish we could see each other, um, but uh, thank you so much for tuning in. Um, the opportunity to run for the school board was something I could not pass up. I am passionate about moving this school district to a place where students will encounter cultural diversity daily and think nothing of it. I am determined to keep Brighton's visual performing arts thriving and accessible to all students. Teachers should be encouraged to develop more interdisciplinary lesson plans where English and STEM lessons can dovetail right into music and art projects. Um, representation is another concern with thirty-two percent of our students identifying as persons of color. It is time for our school board to reflect the same diversity. Um, seeing such a terrific group of candidates, um, it's been a pleasure um, sharing this evening with all of you. I'm excited and encouraged for our district and the things we can all do together. Thank you.
Thank you. And Abram?
What I believe, I believe the school district serves its pleasure of the community. And all students entering the school district with special educational needs are entitled to an education. All presentations should be accessible to our deaf and hard of hearing community. We should foster a safe environment. Uh, I'm sorry, foster a safe and transparent environment where students and teachers can express their concerns without fear or reprisal. We should set a yearly budget not to exceed two million and increases. The school, um, teachers are unsung heroes who work hard and who are gifted at educating young minds should be compensated accordingly, even if we need to take some from the top to pay for it. We should have an online district forum whereby the community can engage about such issues as budget, COVID, safety and racism responded to by school officials and that lives on in perpetuity. The board of education should be impartial and represent the entire community. Information should be presented to the community that is timely and unambiguous. The school, school district's policy to delete any postings on their Facebook site simply because it contains a website link is an infringement upon our First Amendment rights and is an affront to our democratic principles. We should attempt to survey every eligible member in our school district to garner their input. As a public school, our narrative must remain public too and far-reaching. We must evaluate and strike a balance between the fiscal capacity of the community with the needs of the school district. With an eighty-three million dollar budget for thirty-five hundred students, exceeding the property tax cap, which would result in the forfeiture of star credit should never be a consideration, not now and not ever. Board members, school administrators and teachers should receive port, report cards as well and that, and the results of those surveys should be made public. All employees on the BCSD website should include their photo and that any postings or letters by BCSD employees should be identified with their name as well as profile picture. When we have a surplus of cash in our budget at the end of the school year, we should use that amount to reduce our budget for the following year. Right now, the practice is to reduce the tax levy on the backend or put it into reserves. We need to reevaluate our large reserve of twenty-two point eight million. And while full-time kindergarten for a hundred and seventy-five kids was long overdue, at an exorbitant cost of thirty-five million, it was fiscally irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you. This now concludes my portion of the candidate night, but I do want to thank you, all of you candidates for your thoughtful responses, for your willingness to serve in this capacity. And I am now going to turn it back over to the Brighton PTSA for closing remarks.
I just want to take a minute to say thank you to all of you. Thank you Sheri Johnson for um, moderating for us this evening. It's always a pleasure to have you. We appreciate your time and your professionalism. And thank you uh, to all five of the uh, candidates tonight for board of education. We really appreciate you giving the community this time to get to know you a little bit better. Um, so thank you very much and um, we just as a reminder that the vote is on May eighteenth from seven AM to nine PM at the central office building. Absentee ballots are available should you need them. So thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.